You've got mail.
All right, you ready to go?
So I probably should open by making people upset that my job, my enforcement tool is education, so I would like to sincerely thank those wearing a mask. Those without, I would strongly encourage you to please. Our numbers continue to increase. We've had about four more since last evening.
Oh, since last evening?
Since last evening. As you know, the ages range from four to eighty-eight, and we've gotten a couple more teenagers, so...
I just asked our students who, I'm a bus contractor at Southwest Park, and I just asked him in a meeting yesterday if we were gonna go Monday. He said that depending on you, the numbers change. But he said they are right now.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if I were that person, I'd say it won't be a real, real distant time before parents become educators, you know?
Really?
For what that's worth, or please may just clear right up and we'll just go right back to...
November the fourth. November the fourth, that day?
There will definitely be changes when we're here.
Are all the kids in school, does their traffic check every day when they walk in?
They do random checks. One of my recommendations to both corporations, they've got some older infrared, and they use them a lot in Asian countries at airports, and you just walk past, it's not invasive at all. You set what temperature you want, and if it's above that, it lights up red. You can get them for as little as, I think, fifteen hundred and then on up. So I, that was, I said, even if you walk three or four by at the same time, if it lights up red, then you check those to see who it is, but they haven't gone that route yet.
Really?
So they do random checks, and they ask, I mean, they ask the parents to check every day before your kids go to school. First thing I would like to do, I'm gonna make you...
Now you go, you do whatever you want.
Home sick yesterday, so I'm fairly ill-prepared. She's not here today, so I don't have numbers in front of me. But we got a health board meeting last night, and what they are asking is they passed a resolution that get her comp time paid out through the CARE Act, and...
That's the nurse?
Yes. We've let Chris, the CARE's working group, has run it up through the attorneys, and they say that would certainly be reasonable. She's kept very detailed records, so the health board passed that resolution, and so if the council could make a resolution to pay off the comp time, we can submit it to the CAREs group.
So it's not actually been submitted?
It has not been yet.
Let me say it again. Back up, were the commissioners, were the commissioners weighed in on this yet?
They said that they thought because it involved money, they were good with it, but that it would have to...
My understanding, at least, a few weeks ago, were that they weren't so good with it, so...
Well, I guess I should rephrase that. I still wouldn't want commissioners.
Yeah, well, that was probably the same one I did. So if they're fine with it, then, all right, I think we're fine with it, I think.
Well, it's possible you might not have a health department because it's, I'm pretty sure I'm going with this. I can't do it. The other thing is the health board, I'll take one and pass it around, is asking for a raise and to ask that her hours be up to twenty-five. We've got that one account, and boy, I can't remember which it is that has a fair bit of money.
Higher trust, higher trust. That's what it's been.
And it does cover, salary is allowed, so we would be more than willing to pay out of that, at least hopefully. The board will meet again in three months. I mean, we could continue to pay comp time out of the CAREs Act, but she is working seven days a week, a lot of days she's in, eight, doesn't leave till after seven. She's in contact, as we all are, at least she and I are in contact with the schools and with patients on weekends, mornings, moods, nights. But the heaviest burden falls to her. She's on the phone with the school nurses just about every day. She's meeting with Chris O'Brien's wife this morning. We're gonna try to get some student nurses to come in and help with contact tracing, the work out of the EOC, and that would be free to charge. Because I'm busy educating about masks and encouraging restaurants to comply and various other places, and all of the folks at home have hard septic business to be moving this year. Had some failures, and a lot of folks have found that it's taxing their systems quite a bit when all the kids never went to school.
So maybe I missed it. So she wants to go to twenty-five hours per week, and what hour, what does she do now?
She gets fifteen.
She gets fifteen?
She's been, she's been being paid fifteen since she started, I mean, for fifteen hours a week, and she's averaging thirty-five to forty.
So the request is that we go to twenty-five?
Yes, and she's not looking for benefits. I mean, she'd work thirty, but twenty-five was no benefit.
And you're suggesting that the difference in this ten hours comes out of the health trust, global stage?
If you've got it, we'd gladly take it, but I'm guessing.
It's there, but of course, it's not in a request at this point for the budget and blah, 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 and it's, I'm not saying it can't, that's not something we can't work around, that's another additional appropriation. We can fix it with an additional, I would say. We're gonna have to decide that one today, then.
And to be honest, she's not gonna walk out, I mean, she's very conscious of justice.
Yeah, but we...
Yeah, I guess that is okay. Are you wanting to start this now?
That would be great, and then we won't, until it starts, because being the optimist that I am on an occasion, maybe by the time we meet in November, she'll go back. She wasn't looking for a full-time job, she's retired, so her former nurse said this is be a nice retirement job, you work fifteen hours a week, and she started...
I remember when she said that.
Yeah.
War.
Exactly.
Well, it's so deep, no doubt, I'm sure, that having her, and I've heard you say this yourself, that having her is wonderful.
It, yes. And we work together, I help her as much as I can, but that's not my full-time job either, so...
Well, yeah, I kind of feel like a lot of this is falling to you, when, you know, you're really, the designation is the sanitary, not necessarily the infectious disease specialist.
Hey, I stayed at a Holiday Inn Express, I worked on everything. Just ask the governor's office.
Get some of your help.
All right, so... Is the rate that she's asked, it's in this letter, what she's getting now? Is that what she's getting now?
She's getting twenty now.
So she wants an increase in her rate as well?
Yes.
An increase in the rate and an increase in the amount?
And the health board did make that recommendation, agreed with them, so that's right. Got anything left over for the rest of us, maybe, too? Or if he just, like, wanted to sell boats?
Well, the parks got there, it's a paddle boat. They got a rowboat, wait, they cleaned up the leagues for now, so. Like they put Plexi on, using that on TV. Well, I think, I think it's important that you're, to say that your department has certainly been taxed this year, and you have done, I think you've all done a great job working your way through this reasonably appropriately. And not overreacting, not overreacting, and some, I think of, not you guys, but some and other candidates have overreacted, and then something happens, they lose a penny of money, and then they give back, it's not like, you know, I think it's important.
Try to base this on the science that's available. I, you all deserve a lot of credit for that, so...
And I know, I've had different businesses tell me, well, we got turned into the health department, and they will then say, well, the health department holds it. You know, you kind of, I think, understand the game that somebody's mad about something, so, well, I'll just turn you in, but you didn't ever mask one, or you didn't do that, and I, from what I've gathered, just listening to those who shared this with me, they all feel like that you all, whether, I don't know if it's you or the nurse, have handled it well, and you understand what's going on, and it's some, I mean, somebody that just thought, well, I'll just turn you in. I'm glad you're not playing that game, because it is a game with some of them to do stuff like that.
Well, I've learned through the years that, like Paul Harvey, there's usually a rest of the story when I get a break, and it's a disgruntled employee, it's a fired employee, it's an ex-girlfriend or boyfriend, so, not always, but hold on.
I appreciate that you don't play that game, because that's what...
Thanks for a good job.
We'll work on the nursing, we'll, like, figure it out.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Hey, John.
Hey, John.
Yeah?
I think her full name was stated in that exchange, you're gonna take that out?
Oh, I, if you want to, it wouldn't hurt. I'd probably just keep the employee's name out of the...
Sure, if you don't mind.
Well, Julie is here, so I guess I'll just let her, I'm gonna let Julie go ahead and get a little more of the info. Yeah, since it's, I'm trying to stay on time. You've heard a big detox. Yeah, and you've been fresh...
Freshly showered, freshly tanned, sorry.
You're on top.
You still may be on top here, I don't know.
Wasn't easy.
Well, you could've been late, I don't know.
Most of my stuff, I tried to keep the same. There were a couple areas where I was able to defund one area and raise another area, just to try to keep my money the same. One of the things I, and I talked to Joy about it a little bit, because I might have a little bit of an issue with it this year, but I think I've got my number for service contracts. When we first signed up with, I commend who does our billing, and I think we've got two years left on that, we're kind of excited to get rid of them now. When we first signed up with them, our average revenue was only three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Well, they bill at six percent of whatever we bill is what they take, and our average is now five hundred thousand, so there's a little bit of a discrepancy there. I have enough, I think, to cover this year, but I did increase a little bit next year just based off of our average with that. Do you guys, do you have any other questions, because I think there's something else here?
You wanna remount an ambulance?
Yes, that was it.
That's the one that we're all...
It's the...
That's the one that's on the list.
It's the man. So the ambulance that I put on here is the other one that's a two thousand nine, so we remounted our original two thousand nine two years ago. This one is a two thousand nine, has the same, we talked about, is a six-point-eight-liter that had so many issues from board, the engine on it.
Well, you're in it, it's a six-point-five, probably, they don't matter.
It's a two thousand nine, but it was the engine that had so many issues, and this one actually had to have a new engine put in it, and it still has issues. But we are noticing there's quite a bit of rust starting to build around the pruney of the chassis on that one, and it's going, it's at a minimum going to require a large amount of bodywork, but it is time for it to be remounted, so I would like to do it this year if we can in the budget, if we can't, we're gonna have to definitely consider for next year, because it's, it's going to have a large amount of maintenance.
The box still good?
The box is still really good.
So you're wanting to replace the chassis, is that what you're wanting?
Does the chassis, yeah, and it's, I think, sixty-six thousand to be...
Depends on the engine, I'm thinking the six-oh-eight makes you go.
Yes, it's the one that they had...
It's a six-oh, it's a six-oh, and they were problems.
They were limits that they wouldn't admit it.
Well, I've got one of them, but I've got the evidence, so...
What did we pay it the last three months, you remember?
It ended up being sixty-nine thousand I paid. But it was more expensive because it had more damage that they had to repair on the box.
Some wiring issues or some of those boxes?
That was my one and one, too, those were the newer ambulances, and they're not due to be...
It's a new one that's been rewired. So this box has not been rewired?
No, and it won't need it, it's a totally different brand.
So basically, what you're asking for, the sixty-seven thousand is the chassis?
The chassis, and then the labor for them to put the old box on the new chassis. And we can, this will be, the box was brand-new, it's been remounted once, this will be the second remount on it, and you can remount them up to four times, so we still, the box will still be good for several years. And it's in really good condition, so I don't think we'll need any interior work on the box at all.
So this old chassis, is there anything to do with the income we traded, or are you gonna trade it down and see what'll happen if we do it?
Yeah, we normally just do a trade, and I think, if I remember right, the last one they gave us, like, eight thousand dollars for chassis or something.
Sounds about right.
But really, not really, it's all...
But that's included in their bid already, is the trade of the chassis on there. Sorry.
Yeah, I was looking for a little...
I'm sorry.
So are you wanting to do this in, are you wanting to do it now, or are you wanting to do it in twenty-one?
Twenty-one, it's good for now.
So you're good for now, Dylan?
Yeah, we, we actually just updated some of the stuff on it with minor maintenance, and it'll be good until twenty-one.
So you're actually gonna have four, you get that, then you have four pretty good, you understand?
We'll have two that are almost brand-new with the chassis, we'll have two that we'll have to consider a chassis remount eventually, because it's, they're not ready yet.
So you would...
The boxes are perfect on those, so when we go to remount, we should...
We'll do the chassis.
Yeah.
So you think that if we do this remount, then, then you should be good then, or...
I'm hoping that it's a minimum, absolute minimum of two years, but I think that we might be able to pull off three or four years, depending on how, our run volume's so high right now that I can't, I can't promise anything. Our run volume is out of the score.
You're double, you're doubling.
We've more than doubled our run, our average run volume this time year. But the good news is, the majority of them we're keeping a little more local, so we're not traveling as far, so we're actually a little bit under where we were last year on our fuel budget, but we're well above miles traveled on those trucks, well above. They're just on the rip on some... I tried rolling this in, but here's that stuff, like, that the remount just doesn't fit any of their truck.
So the only way that we have to pay for this, as you know that I try to protect that riverboat fund that we have, and basically, I try to protect it for, basically, for the ambulance, if you buy ambulances or whatever. We're assuming that the, it's certainly about seventy thousand that comes in, we will assume that that's still gonna come in, it comes in in September, I think. So really, that's the only place we have to pay for that, right? We have, we have a hundred and seventy thousand in there now, so basically, if that comes in, as we expect it to in September, why, that would basically pay your remount, so we've not budgeted or advertised anything, so we would have to go additionally to early January to pay for that. Is that the best, what is the best time of the year to be short on?
To be a hundred percent honest, right now, all the time of the year is terrible. I prefer, and we have to do it, to do it either over the winter, when our run volume seems to slow down some, or early spring. We generally start seeing a huge increase starting Memorial Day, and the last two years have gone clear through past November, so we don't have a great time.
I would like to know if that, I want to know that, right? I want to know that, I will know that in, hopefully, September, I, the state's not, COVID's, it's not coming in, but...
I would have a job on waiting until March, Stephen, schedule it.
Well, what I was, what I was thinking, I don't know that you need to have to wait that long, we, we need to know whether or not that's gonna come in or not, and that answer, question will be answered.
Yeah.
So what I was thinking was, you know, we don't have to wait until first of January, I mean, I don't want you to be without it any longer than you have to, so, once that question is answered, I feel like that we could even possibly, you know, do it additionally. I'll go, I'll go something like that and go ahead, because it's not like, that's the only revenue that goes in that riverboat fund, it's that money right there, nothing else, and nothing else is coming out of it.
Because it's scheduled, if you knew the money clerk got it scheduled for...
Then you could maybe schedule it for...
First of December or whatever.
December or something.
I'm not sure how the, the problem that we had with the last one, I don't, I don't know exactly how it works, but when they get the new chassis, they switch over, they upgrade to the new year at some point, I don't know.
So there might be a wait, may have to wait anyway.
They, so they quoted us for a twenty-twenty-one chassis or a twenty-twenty chassis, but they might be switching over to twenty-twenty-one, and then there's a cost increase with that, so I...
Yeah, that's the thing, that, I know when Justin comes in and talks about his, is the new model of your vehicles that easily can add or hire, and they went up, there can't fill enough vehicles right now, so...
You know, if you're twenty-twenty...
That's where I'm kind of sitting here, I'm thinking, all right, if it, if this was quoted as a twenty, what is the price of twenty-one gonna be out of that juice higher? Do we just go ahead and give her the okay to get the ball rolling? Now, I would like to know that riverboat money come in, too, but I guess maybe the question to ask here, back to you, and have you go back at them, is, is how long do you have to get on a twenty-one? Can we wait and see that the revenue comes in the riverboat before we hold it very long? Today's the twenty, it's, it's next month, that's exactly right. It's not that far out.
If the whole state is on an increase, you may have an input.
But they're not, the state's complaining that their run volume is down, so I don't, I think it's because of our state parks and our outdoor events and outdoor perks that they can go to, but our run volume is substantially higher, and a lot of people are complaining that theirs is substantially lower than normal, so...
Shouldn't we all get a vehicle?
I, I hope.
Okay, well, they have to have time to order the chassis, honestly, I think.
Right.
Find out if we can get a twenty still.
Okay. I'll call him, see if I leave here and make sure.
Anything else you want to talk about?
I don't, I don't think I really asked for any other increases or anything, I think that was the biggest one. My budget looks really long because I try to duplicate in all the accounts to make sure that it's covered, but for the most part, I try to keep everything identical because we're, our run volume's higher, but we've saved enough money going through the state PPA and different things that it's not gonna require us to have a higher budget than any of us, so...
You, you want to say about part-time rates and so on, I mean, you are obviously in your program, as soon as we've talked a little bit about what we might do with the part-time rate, we aren't gonna make a decision today, but do you have anything you'd like to chime in on that, because it affects your part-time maintenance?
Right, so when I saw the letter from the council, I had to question, I'm not sure how, my part-timers, because they have to be certified, they have to maintain their hours, they're paid at a little bit higher rate than eight, and I'm trying, part-timers over the county, so I don't know, am I to consider them, that they will go up the same amount as the rest of the county as a base rate if it goes up for my budget, or am I to consider that they're already past the base rate? And then we do pay three different amounts for the three different certification levels because it's more work, obviously, more schooling. So I questioned that, but I did, I went ahead and went through everything as if it would stay the same, obviously, it would, my budget would stay the same, and I went clear up to if I increased each pay level by the same amount that we were increasing the rest of the county employees, and I, as far as I know, I might have to make one small transfer just to get everything figured, evened out, but I won't have to have an increase in my main budget. I have enough money in my part-time and overtime funds to cover what we're doing now, because we've not had a big turnover in employees, so employees are, yeah, so we, we're not utilizing as many part-time employees, which is really nice, so the hours that they're, that they're filling, you know, we're able to keep that in our full-time count.
You remember the rates I've talked about?
Right now, a basic is ten eighty-five, and advanced is twelve eighty-five, and a paramedic is thirteen eighty-five an hour.
And those are the part-time, that's what we pay?
That's our part-time, yes.
Well, I would assume that we should do a fair thing to do, just above them, I think, we, if we, you know, quite honestly, this is already hurting, it's about half a night there on the part-time stuff, but if we, if we adjust, and we'll adjust yours, too, that's only fair, I think, and certainly now, it's not, I don't think anybody is really truly, everybody's, they're all over their family about what they're paying, so... There's really hardly anybody that's actually making ten dollars. There's hardly anybody making ten dollars. There's hardly, three, three people, three positions. We'll work it out.
But I just wanted to make sure you guys knew that I, I wasn't sure what...
No, you, you did, you did, right. I just wanted you to talk about your, your part-time situation, because it's another one of the pieces, when we started, this idea of raising this, and what other effects come along with all that, that you brought up, which is good. Better than it now, than waiting for these prices. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
Appreciate it, Doctor Dan, for helping.
Thank you. And I was at the last council meeting, did you guys see we got our grants? We got funded for our grant, so the funding comes in the thirtieth.
And that's your training, training, right?
That's the training institution, it's two hundred thousand in max training. So we're planning the classes for that now, I have four that are enrolling in paramedic class, three that are enrolling to be instructors, and we've got stuff coming in, so we'll start doing our MDT classes on site.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, we'll see you. Okay, Chris, I guess you're...
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm going to start with, all right, I was gonna start with, a lot of the stuff stays the same, but there's four increases, and that kind of cascaded to a few more increases. So the first one is I'm asking for a raise for the six dispatchers. My six dispatchers, and this is similar to the raise that the sheriff's asking for the six dispatchers that he has. They have, they've done good work, Park County pays a little bit lower than surrounding areas, and in the state, their average is lower, and I'd like to see that raise go up, see their pay go up. The second thing I'm asking is for four thousand additional dollars to help us do evaluation of our dispatch network and our system. Right now, although our system works, and it, it meets all the requirements for the state, and it, we're not looking at increasing capability, but there's some reliability issues with it, and it's pushing ten years now, and we need to look at changing some systems, and I need to see what systems I need to change, so I can kind of come up with basically like a five-year plan, and we can start figuring out where that money's gonna need to fall to, to keep the dispatch going.
Did nine-one-one pay for that? I mean, you put it in here in the general fund, and then the general fund?
It is in the general fund, and I asked if we could use the nine-one-one fund, and the state board said no. They, their reasoning wasn't very clear, but they were very clear on the no.
Nice and nice, I don't have, I'd like something to stick with that. Okay, go ahead.
The second thing is I'd like to drop about, or spend about nine K on HVAC system for the dispatch, we just, we're...
That's all at the jail, right?
At the jail, right? Yes, at the jail, yes, and that is, that we just did the server room, so we pretty much go over, and I worked the sheriff on that, and we work on redoing that system, and there's the quote that was in there. The last thing and the major thing is I would like to pay dispatchers overtime. I put a chart in there that, that showed that where I came up with that fifty-four thousand dollars, pretty much what I did was I took the days that they are supposed to work, and then I did, I went through, and I said, the county gives them holidays, sick days, holidays, but someone still needs to be in dispatch working those days, and so that's normally, we compensate them with, with comp time. So what I'm trying to do is get it so that we pay the actual cost of labor within that, that, that year, and not build up a lot of comp time hours.
So how does that really benefit the county?
Well, it's gonna benefit it in, in two ways. The first way is, is you're gonna be paying people, and you're gonna get better dispatchers, or you're gonna get, when people come in, they're gonna be more... they're going to be, um, more likely to get hired because they're going to be paid for the work they do. The second thing is, when you have personnel transitions, you know, you don't have to pay out this huge amount of money in comp time when somebody leaves their job, and so it's going to make budgeting a lot easier. When I look at this, people are already, you're already paying for, for this comp time, you're just paying for it when they leave.
We really have had that, I mean, most of the turnover, the sheriff, I talked about this, where he really is fighting is with the jails. I mean, there's constant turnover with the, with the jails. I don't know, you've really not had that much turnover with dispatch, have you? I mean, how many?
No, we haven't.
I mean, have you had, when's the last time you hired a new, or new dispatcher?
We just hired one.
Just one, but that's been, but prior to that, which.
Before that, we hired one, so in the, in the last, the last two years, I want to say we have three new dispatchers.
So it's not terrible. You're always going to have turnover, I mean, that is just part of the.
All right, I, I understand that.
Always going to have turnover, it doesn't, I mean, we haven't, you ever officer deals with turnover? Uh, you know, I don't know that, that it's maybe quite as bad as you're trying to legal and relate, turnover, turnover. You know, people get a better job, people, they're, you know, things change.
There's just significant investment the county makes to be, to, to be dispatched.
Well, I know not everybody can do it, you have, it's a special, takes a special person to do that, and I, I don't, you know, I agree with that, but I'm just not seeing the turnover like he is with the jails, I mean, he's constantly fighting that.
He's always one of them.
He's constantly fighting that, but, go ahead.
Um, and, and the second stuff is, the county's going to end up paying it anyway, because it's, it's comp time, that gets built up. And so, one is where we're doing it, you know, sporadically when people leave. I mean, my predecessor left, and there was a big comp time bill. Um, I, and I know this is like other departments are having this, um, and so all, the, the big thing that this would do is it would just make it.
So commissioners are in the process of overhauling, overhauling the comp time, so they're, uh, can't legal counsel, that sort of thing. So there may be some changes coming with how comp time is dealt and limited, so I'm pretty sure it will replace them. So, I mean, it may be premature to see, until we see what the commissioners do with that. You know, and what new rules they install, because I, I'm currently certain they're going to, so. Commissioner Meeks was asked this morning about it, and they're, they're not as far along as we hoped, but they are working on it.
And I don't see how, uh, their plan and everything and what they're going to come up with, isn't going to change the fact that you need to have a dispatcher in the dispatch, and there's so many, there's so many hours that there's a requirement, and then county gives them holidays, sick days, and these other days off, and so you're still going to have people that are working.
Okay, okay, all right, let's move on, one area that you want to talk about.
Um, and so, so th- those are the four increases, the increase in social security comes to the asking for increase in, in, um, in the raises and then the increase in the, uh, for the overtime. Uh, the, the other thing that I would like to talk about is, is how the, the dispatch is financed, um, with 1222 funds. The 1222 is the 911 fund, we get, every, every year the county's going to get a little over 200,000 dollars per year. And then depends on how much the state board spends, you could get additional funds, so that lately it's been up to 48, last year it was 48,000, this year it's going to be lower because they did some changes and they're paying for more stuff. So I estimate it's going to be about 20,000 dollars. Now, you can pay salaries with the, uh, the 1222 fund, and right now, when we pay salaries, it's paid for both, uh, 1222 and then the general fund.
Rich by three, I think, don't you think?
Yeah, we, yes.
And anything?
And then the supervisors also paid out of the 1222, so the general fund pays for about 50 to 60% of the dispatch. There's a lot of, a lot of requirements on how that money's spent, like we just, I can't spend that 4,000 dollars on it. So I, I'm not saying we need to do this this year, but I'd like to talk to people over this year about changing it so that we put as much salary in the 1222 account as possible, and it gives us a lot more flexibility to, to buy stuff.
You can pay all the dispatchers out of 1222?
It, it's pretty close. I, I, I have to look at the whole numbers, and I want to keep it under 200,000.
Well, same as the fact that you may exceed the number, but you legitimately can pay their whole, all of their salaries out of that fund?
So we can pay their salaries, but then you get into, um, social security, um, and then the fringe benefits, you know, I, I haven't done that.
I don't want to worry about moving that stuff, we try to keep that in buckets everywhere down there, I think.
Right, well, at one time, the state board of accounts was, when we first started this, when I was doing basically what Roy does now, Phil Lester degree, Hazel and I were doing, and they wanted to see some equal expenses in the general fund or some other funds, and not all in 911. Now, whether they relaxed that or not, I don't know, but they weren't just exactly great about wanting to see all salaries in that 911 fund. Now, they may have relaxed that, I don't know, but I think that's something that a question should be posed to them if you proceed down the road to that. The other thing is, you know, you need to have money available when equipment breaks and, and that sort of thing, all these 911 funds, because that's where that's going to come from, if, you know, other things happen, so you don't want to spend all that you have when something breaks and, you know. So I don't know how much kind of balance or reserve you have in 911, maybe you have a large, a high, a couple hundred thousand, so, so it sounds like you could be good, if you don't want to, you always need to be prepared to lighten some strikes, so to speak.
We should, uh, do, do what you want this year.
Well, I mean, I, I think, I understand the point of what you're, you know, I, I, I've never researched any of that, so I have no answer. Whether or not it can be done, um, obviously we don't want to overspend the, the revenues, uh, there's 232,000 dollars here. Don't want to spend the revenues, but if you can consult on some of that, because it gets difficult for some of the other things that you're trying to do out of that fund, and then we just mess around with 400 dollars, spend the wrong fund or something, or just a couple months ago or something on it.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
It's a good research project to see if it works. Okay, anything else?
Uh.
See if we can do that.
I just wanted to bring in, um, so we, we will, the 1222 funds, we're going to bring in 200,000 dollars pretty much every year, and then there's going to be that 90, which I think is, in October, we should get about, they call it 90, the 1090 split, and that's going to be probably about 20,000. Last year we got 48,000, but we're not paying, um, we're not paying AT&amp;T for other route calls anymore, the state's paying it, and that's why you saw the drop in, in, um.
Service.
Service contracts. The, uh, the EMP salary grant went down by 450 dollars for us, this is, uh, money that the federal government gives to the state to give, to pay, help pay the salaries in emergency management. And the, um, so last year's salary grant of 8, 18,000, 450 dollars, I think we should expect payment sometime in November. We still have to do a lot of the final stuff and that.
Do we know why they lowered it again, or this time?
No, um, I, I, I think it has to do with how the state wants to spend money, and they're readjusting. Um, it's not the federal government that's changing it, it is the state, and they're readjusting how they do stuff.
Those ones.
We, we really didn't, I mean, we missed out on 450 dollars or something.
Uh, yeah, I saw it, I just, it's a trend.
It's a trend, but I think you'll see that trend more and more.
It's a trend.
Based on getting the terrible footnotes of how much for sales and that, that they're getting.
And they, and just, for the grants, um, we, the car grant, we should have, that money was paid a while ago. The AED grant, which was 30, like around 3,600 dollars, should be paid here in the next week. Um, we're still working through the state home and security grant, which ends on the 31st, and that has a lot to do with our, our dispatch designer. If you want, I can spend the next three hours complaining about him, so. But we're, we're going to spend that down, that should be good, we've applied for a grant for the state home and security grant for 20, for 20. We applied for the hazards material, uh, emergency program grant for 21, and then we did the application for, uh, the EMP grant, which should be 8,000, 18,000 dollars.
Who cares that money?
It shouldn't be coming in next week, and it should be about 30 grand. We have about 96 grand in requests, and so, um, and we did, we got nothing, they just said, hey, you're approved, here's the money, so there were no complaints, so. No one's, no one's.
Not because of the opportunity you all are down here to get this credit, setting it up right?
Let Kirk go through you guys.
Kirk, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric, yeah. Kirk?
I'm not Christie, like.
I was going to say, I could, I.
A little bit uglier.
I could have done that.
Hello?
Yep, your floor is yours, whatever you want on.
Uh, they'll, everything's the same as what it was last year, we didn't ask for any increases, the only increases was the salary changes for, uh, the county employees, so there was no increase for the traction services.
Purdue's not, Purdue's not.
You're not here, right, I take it?
We're, we're not supposed to get one. Zeros.
Oh, the fair went well, all of that, we kind of talked about that the last meeting, I mean, uh.
It's been adjustment for some of the educators with the services we deliver and stuff, but I think, uh, having the fair on Christie's part and doing the U's and four's development still, our enrollment numbers were down just a little bit, but, you know, enrollment doesn't end until May, and all this started mid-March with the COVID stuff, so I do think that that attracted from some of our enrollments. Uh, we did have several that chose the virtual option to exhibit at the fair, so we know that was a concern for a lot of people. Um, the HHS educator, Gail, she's been doing a lot of online programs and delivering stuff still, and now started impersonating with, uh, safety, uh, procedures in place and stuff, and then on my side of the A and R stuff, I've done a lot of work with, uh, virtual trainings and stuff like that. All of us have continued to do professional development classes to, to help us do better presentation skills, you know, to our clientele. Even though we do have an issue with broadband availability in the county, we all know that. But I posted a video the other day that had three days, had 1,100 views, so still getting impact.
Had to run the barman's office.
What'd you say?
They had to run the barman's office, so they played it, so.
Run the barman's office.
What can you do, you know? Your son, your wife would agree, so.
So you, uh, your internet out there, you know, Bloomingdale?
Uh, it's provided by Purdue, they go through Purdue, the internet at the exchange office. Bloomingdale is there as well, at the whole fairgrounds. And I don't think they charge anything for that, do they?
I think so.
You know, that was one thing, the comment that came out of the fair was, you know, having the ability to do the shows online where people could be at home where they didn't have to go out, and that's probably something that we'll continue next year. We'll probably fund that through, uh, sponsorships of it, you know, and put their peak out of the bottom.
I saw Purdue was down there taking everything, but I figured that was actually there to spy and make sure you were doing what you're supposed to do.
Purdue, uh, offered a service this year for the first time, those people are actual, uh, video, videographers through production, through the LA Hall Music, and those were contracted for each one of the shows, uh, it wasn't very expensive, you know, it was.
Oh, that was a good deal, people that wanted.
They did really good, I think.
Why, you know.
And the gentleman's talking about a certain animal or a certain person, they zoom in on, you know, a real deal, so.
What kind of response have you had from, uh, first local campus?
Um.
That's going to hurt.
We've had a lot of people calling, and I haven't heard whether the fair board said yes or no yet to whether they could even set up the camp. So, I don't know. We've had a lot of phone calls, you know, and I, I know all you guys have seen everything, you know, scuttled up, you know, people are going to come anyway and all that stuff, so I don't know how that's going to affect things, I'm sure the revenue from that's going to go down.
Looking at 30, 40,000.
Yeah, that's, uh, what the usual revenue was, last year was down a little bit for that, um, so it will affect some things. I think it's like everybody, every other nonprofit organization in the county, they're going to be affected by it, and we're just going to find ways to try to raise additional funds to help patch stuff in and, you know, do essential services.
Okay, anything else for Kirk?
She put good work.
Justin, I'm just, right now, over here.
Okay, well, I'm on the, y'all are going to go, but she has to.
Yes.
Something, but she'll leave the chassis, that's fine, yeah, all right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Take care.
Thanks, guys.
If I heard right on TV, like, they interviewed the band at Old Smithville?
The Bridge Street Old Road, that's thinking about the old road.
He predicted thousands of people will be there. Do you see it on TV?
No, but I read, I read, uh, on the center, there'll be thousands of people here for it.
I don't know, I stopped in the cabin.
Yeah, I, I, I was, I was surprised you said that.
There'll be a lot of people still show around there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I promised the owner she could go, she was.
The Riverboat Sherman Fund did come in yesterday at 68,619, $73, and that will be distributed out tomorrow.
We have to answer that question. Go ahead.
Um, as far as the budget, I've kept everything the same as the past, also for the first deputy. Um, I'd like for the first deputy to pay the same, the second deputy, let me clarify that, the payroll clerk is my second deputy. I'd like to have that paid the same as the first deputy, due to the fact that she's got, that payroll clerk has a lot more to do than anybody in the whole courthouse. There's, she's doing the payroll, she's taking care of all the entrances, um, she's takes care of all the FMLAs. And is a non-stopping, also the child support and the garnishments supplemental insurance she also has to deal with. She's got a lot that she has to deal with on a day-to-day basis, also with that house entrance. Since we're self-funded, she has to keep money in the bank, every time that comes in, she has to make sure that it's paid and went out of her own. So with all that said, the payroll clerk has a lot of responsibilities, and I'd like to see her be paid at the same as the first deputy. Other than that, um, the only other change is with the, um, plat office. Um, I, I would kind of prefer for the plat office money to be stayed in with the auditor fund, I would like to take that plat office revenues, and most of the counties are going to digital, um, the transfer books and everything are going all digital. And we had a conference, internet conference later day on that with Robert Marsh. And I haven't got a price for that, but that's for the future, that's not going to affect next year, but that will be for the future to have all the transfer books to be scanned and everything to go on on.
So you're wanting to use flat front, or flat front, gravity to, to do that, is that what you're saying?
That is correct.
Have you ever found out what those funds are called?
Not yet, I am going to pursue that here with them next week.
Now, well, I feel we have a, we need a cost, even.
Right.
The reason that I asked you when you brought that up back was, is this a 50,000 dollar project, or is this a 500,000 dollar project? And, because what you just said was, is if you don't want physicians, or any of the physicians to move to that fund because of this, uh, we've already, we'd already talked about putting one of those physicians in the platform fund because we keep bringing in revenue into it, um, without, we're certainly spending more from now, whether that's for the,
Correct.
The GIS system or parts of splits and so on, but also trying to lighten the load on the general fund a little bit here.
And I agree with you, lighten, lighten on the general fund, that would be all right, not just looking at the future and.
No, I understand that, that's why I want to know what we're talking about.
Yeah, so you really just need to get us a, sooner you give us a price as to what the cost would be, but, I mean, no matter, I mean, we can't, yeah, I mean, can't, just to have a, yeah, a conceptual concept of what that costs, do you have any, do you, do you have any idea, Mary, or something like that, of cost?
My scanner that I got to, uh, Stan Brooks was 40 some thousand.
And you're talking about basically having somebody come in and do that, aren't you?
Correct. That's what the other counties have done. They've had this, um, SBS portals. They come in, they scan it all for us and do the whole thing.
But this, as you say, from this going forward, we're not going back and doing stuff in the rear. Then is that correct or did I misunderstand?
We're meaning for scanning.
For what? Yeah, for what you're wanting to do.
Yeah, they're, when they go in to do the, um, online version, they do scan the past, um, transfer books.
So you're going to go back? How many years? I mean, where, where's the magic number where you stop? You just keep going back? How far do you go back?
I'll have to check that out.
Eighteen, sixteen.
Whenever, whenever they started.
I don't know. I don't have any idea what big parcel and they're, you know, how, there's probably some parcel in this county that's never transferred out of that family.
I got a fifty-three black.
So it sounds like the answer is we, we, we're going to have to have a lot more information before we can even possibly make some kind of a decision on that. Is that the cost?
Uh, it sounds pretty expensive, but I don't know.
I'll have to call, um, Robin Marsh and I'll have to get the, that set up to see what cost is.
Okay.
And then just see what the cost is every year after.
That's fifteen.
Well, exactly right. It's not like it's a one-time cost. I mean, at least, you know, one of the issues we always face is, is it's two different things. If it's just a one-time, it's like the voting machines. We don't buy voting machines for another ten years maybe, at least hopefully. We put in a new.
Like J. A.
A new jail operating system out there. It should last for fifteen, twenty years. Those are one-time expenses. But what can we get into these worries to year after year after year after year is, I mean, the county may not get treated differently and that's why. But, okay, anything else on, you want to say?
That's the only other changes.
Okay.
No, no, no.
Oh, okay.
Uh, we talked about, you're obviously working through the situation with the employees in the plat office. Um, you're asking for a, a, a extra raise for somebody in this office. Um, we talked in here in the, in the discussion about the situation down there of putting them both in as the, what would be the plat assistant rate?
Correct.
Are you doing that? Or what are you, what are you doing? However, how is that going to play out? Cause that's not our decision. That's.
I'd like to keep it like this and it's possible in the budget. With the plat supervisor won't pay and the plat assistant has another pay. But if we can't work that into the budget, then I would be willing to go in to have both of them stay, right? And have no supervisor.
Well, that's my kind of question, Maggie. And I was involved in that discussion and I didn't object. And I still really, it's out of your call in some ways, but isn't it better to have a supervisor though?
Supervisor does a little bit more than the other one does.
Well, somebody needs to be accountable if things aren't, you know, if something's going wrong down there. Why, then there needs to be accountability. If there's a supervisor, why, then either the supervisor's not doing it or, you know, I'm coming from, from accountability. I mean.
Right.
Um, I don't really care. I'm just saying.
I don't either, but somebody's got to be in charge of that.
Somebody's not really being charged down there. I feel like, like.
Absolutely agree.
Cause the work's not being done. Why, then we have a supervisor that's supposed to be seeing to that. It's, you know, go back to this accountability. That, that's my thing. I don't really care.
A supervisor would be a good idea to leave out of that pay. The supervisor can have a.
I mean, they make a little bit more. I mean, it's that first, you know, they make, not first deputy pay, I think. So. Okay. Everything. Okay. So whenever the sheriff arrives, why, we'll talk to him. Okay.
You're a Joe.
Yeah, you're a Joe.
Uh, basically for next year, I'd, uh, requested a one new vehicle and of course raises or some kind of incentive for employees. Uh, just basically we're the only twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five police agency in the county. There's a certain county where also the lowest paid out of all those, all the bottom of the state salary wise, the lower seven percent nationwide. Uh, we have a high turnover rate of all staff. Uh, and that's due to salaries. Um, we have a high liability, probably the highest in the county. So therefore if we get good employees, we need to repay them. We're also essential employees. Uh, they've worked through all this. Uh, I don't know how many people have had tests that took over, probably twenty-some, had five in quarantine, have one in there now just for contact of a lot of the people that they've been in contact with. Some of the things we did to save taxpayer money was we've used commissary money to buy vehicles, uh, build a pole barn. We've used drug forfeiture money to just to buy more cars, the Dodge Caravan for the jail almost county budget money, grant money. House extra inmates. Uh, so far we've raised one point five million dollars by doing that. Basically my spiel.
We've had some discussion here about employee turnover. Uh, I know I didn't have a word, I didn't have a past answer, but I'm going to ask anyway. Would you say that the jailer is your one that you fight the most as far as your group of employees as far as having?
They're the largest employee pool, but yeah, I mean, even, yeah, we lose more jailers than we do anybody else.
And would you say that that's partly because they can walk across the street to the prison and make, I'm sure, certain more dollars?
Two dollars an hour more.
Two dollars an hour more. Uh, but as far as other categories in the, the turnover is not near what it is with, with that particular group. Because I mean, you don't have, I mean, I know we have some of the deputies and some with, you know, as mentioned here, we have some of the dispatchers, but it's not been near what it is with the jailer.
Usually monthly on jail staff, maybe once a year, once over two years with the deputy, dispatcher.
They're going to have turnover. I, you know, quite honestly, Chris was in here and, you know, it sounded like listening to him, the whole turnover is bad. I, I don't know. Somebody can improve, somebody improves themselves. That's, I don't see this in such a disaster myself. I understand in your particular case, and you have to train these people and that's where we're getting. So can you tell me a little bit about what you go through to train a jailer? What they have to do?
But then the, well, but then the first year be a hundred state mandates, I think, for a forty-hour training class, which we have to send them somewhere to do that and try to find a paro or somewhere a little bit larger where they can drive back and forth.
Basically a week to work, of course, for them. Do they do it all within that one week?
Yes.
Or is that, that you send them to do that? Does that cost us or, I mean, it costs us their duty, obviously.
The training, that's free. Um, the academy offers that. So, yeah, just the, the meals, travel time. But the uniforms, they also have a uniform with anywhere. And then they go through mostly what the deputy has to go through for the defensive tactics firearms, because they do the transports and nights where they go. CPR. That plus some additional medical training, some psychological training. That's required by the state also. But basically they just, we mostly bring somebody into the jail. That person is theirs. The legger leaves, I mean, book in, fingerprint, the medical screenings of their own suicide watch. Somebody's on medication. They have supervised that every time that they get mad, so maybe three times a day. Supervisor, if they have to test them, make sure that, you know, they've got prednisone or whatever, proper dosage. Bites, the speeds, pass out commissary, just kind of adult babysitter, basically. Somebody's got supervised for twenty-four hours.
Somebody has to be responsible for that.
They work, uh, four-hour shifts. I'm sorry.
They work twelve-hour shift?
Yes.
Um, they work straight days or straight nights or how's that work for?
Yeah, they're either straight days or straight nights.
Okay.
There's three on night shift and then four on day shift. And then the jail commander's on day through Friday during the day.
Right. And then supervisor on.
On each shift.
Four shifts. You have four curbs, right?
Yes.
Or shifts or I mean, call it. Well, it's something I think that we really, we've talked about it a little bit in some, but, you know, I think that that particular group of the jailers, you know, we really need to think about maybe if we give pay raises at all month there's up for or some just because of the turnover and the fact that they can easily get another job. I mean, I, you know. But you were, you started us, your career as a jailer, right?
Correct.
You and I talked about some of these things back before the virus. At that point, I think it was, you tell me where I'm wrong or maybe elaborate, but at that point, didn't you say that basically we paid as much or more to jailers than the prison paid? And that you actually had a, a flow from the prison to our jail?
Yeah.
Originally, generally at that point?
Yeah, originally we did. And then just within the last probably two years, they started outpacing us.
To where the flow is now paid to them versus the other way around. This state's really accelerated their pay raising for, for their, um, paperwork or whatever they take all.
Correct.
Their correctional law.
Correct.
So they've accelerated their raises to where they're now. Four thousand dollars a year higher or something in effect, right?
Correct.
Okay. Well, we, we're all look at that. I think that it's something that needs to look at. Um, it'll help those that are out there that are employed there now and it may help you that we don't have the turnover. I, you know, I think that that, in that particular case, I think it's going to happen. As far as the turnover. So I think we've got to try to do something. So whether it'll help or not, I, I don't know.
That's one of the worst parts of the job to me, I think, in my experience. Yeah, it's hard.
They probably recruit.
Yeah.
Um, talk about your vehicle options. Talk about the vehicles. Uh, uh, Savannah Rose did tell us that, that he would contribute five thousand. So we have that's on the table. So go ahead from there.
Uh, what we bought the last few years was, uh, Tahos. They revamped them, uh, put a different motor in them. So the price jumped twenty-one hundred dollars on those. So a twenty-twenty-one Tahoe is thirty-seven thousand, four twenty. Um, there is no sedan that's being offered now except for a Dodge Charger. They offer a V-six all-wheel drive. They don't offer a V-eight all-wheel drive. But it's twenty-eight-five for the base on that. Uh, a Durango V-eight all-wheel drives thirty-five thousand. And a twenty-twenty-one Ford Explorer, which I just got that price, is thirty-one thousand, two fifty-five. So the Explorer is three grand more than the Charger. And that's what we have for the Tahos. I guess the biggest seller on the Tahos were if you get on some kind of a patient, you get fifty percent back on them. If you trade them under a hundred thousand, a hundred point five thousand.
Can you get that much back out of them?
Yeah, on the Tahos. We'll check that with the local county sheriff and other departments and that's.
So you roll them every two years, you get half a buck?
Well, we, three.
Yeah, well, yeah, a hundred thousand, whatever that costs.
Since fifty per, you're getting a trade in the eight, eighteen, almost nineteen thousand dollars. I mean, it's a number you send people in and out. So I, I have a, well, no, you can give me seventeen thousand on that.
So. It's on the, uh, forces, which they don't make anymore. When we get two grand on them.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know what they give on the Charger. I didn't make that part. I'm, I'm guessing even if you have four grand on that, you're still taking it.
I'm not sure a Charger for what you do is, is logical. I mean, it's fine for those, you know, like the towns and that sort of.
No, I asked them to look at cars because we bought, as you said, we've bought these thirty-seven thousand, these expensive Tahos the last few times. And I, I, I know why, but I asked them to look at, at other options too. So that's why we're coming in on the Charger.
Well, that's nice. I, I'm just saying here in my opinion, that I don't think it's practical. I know our body employees, SUVs better.
The truth is if you would take a, a maintenance cost between, let's say, the Charger and your Tahoe or something you'd want to compare with, how much would that be as in a sparse gasoline usage and so forth?
The Charger, I, I remember saying, right, it might have like eleven or fourteen miles in gallon. But the, the Tahoe that's got the motor and it's supposed to, I think they're all two cylinders, all the eight cylinder. The Explorer, that is like the, just the old base fuel injected motor. It's not the hybrid motor. The hybrid was a, the hybrid motor come in at forty thousand, six hundred dollars. So.
Whoa. Think we need those.
I think it builds an Explorer worth anywhere near forty thousand dollars yet. But the, they all certainly like the SUVs better. I don't know what the Explorer's.
Yeah, I think it's safer there too.
They might be safer. I mean, that's the other thing. I mean, it's safer. It'll carry your belt and.
Save the road better.
Sure. So it boils down to that. You, you've been working on it. I congratulate you on that about how, you know, how are we on paperwork? That's, you know, that really always boils down to that. So you had some ideas. I want to share those and we'll try to figure out what we think maybe, see what avenue we can get.
The USDA has a grant that, no guarantees that we'll get it. I think last year, three comments on the plot, we got it. As far as I know, they're still paying thirty percent of where I think they're at on that. That's one option. No, you can't order any of these vehicles yet, no matter what, you know, what? Looks like they're all probably going to be built December. Can't probably get them until next year. So it might be timed based on the grant cycle if we can get in it. If not, we looked at our commissary. I full worked earlier in the year with the COVID and how it will do this a little bit better. Originally I had said five thousand. We've looked at it. Winduke ten, uh, plus Nolan Alvin down the road. You know, it's going to be three or four months before we even have to pay for the thing. Maybe more than that. Uh, bidding's like five thousand dollars, but we could swing at two out of that.
You can apply those to Andrew's.
Yeah, five thousand across.
You get there.
Didn't you tell me that, um, if we go for the USDA grant that we can't, you can't use commissary or you can't, how could we? I mean, we probably get around that, but.
The way to explain it, they wanted to budget it under your vehicle budget line.
Mm-hmm.
So they didn't want to consider commissaries coming out of the budgeted line. So they didn't want to mix commissary with that.
So just, just thinking out loud here and I, and obviously we made no decision. We're not putting the puzzle together here. But if, if we could budget some place for the, for the thirty-seven thousand, uh, well, I guess we would. Probably we could budget less minus five off of that because Savannah Rose is, I don't think pre-trim.
But we have the spending charge, which is fine. So it's going to be back more on.
Okay, fine. So we'll budget that and then we could just have you go after the grant, which that'd be one, one thousand, eleven, twelve thousand dollars. Uh, and then I guess we see where we're at in December or whenever you know about the grant and go from there. With your, I guess, commitment that you won't just go work at the car without talking to this again. Uh, is that something that you want to do or think about then? Or, I mean, we still need to put the puzzle together. So I don't want to promise, but, um, to me, that's the way to go. Try slipping in there, put it in and then, you know, we'll just have to kind of look through it maybe at the end of the year. Since it's not going to be building, you sit here, why?
Yeah.
We're not going to hold on you, we're not going to hold on you up that much.
I'd like, if we could rotate those out over a hundred, that would help.
Well, if you trade two.
Well, originally, you know, when we tried to get a handle on all these vehicles, we were, you know, next year's not an election year. And we'd always talked about, you know, kind of, and that was the intent. I think it's a good idea because elections a hundred thousand dollars basically. So, um, and we bought several vehicles. So I don't feel like we're under a big pressure. But if we could get one, why, we'll get one. Uh, we might work. But, so does that sound like?
Yeah.
Being good with that or?
That's like rebel, whatever.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll, we'll know more on the eighteenth of September, uh, kind of how the puzzle goes together, I hope. And, and, um, so we'll do something like that and. So we'll do something like that and go from there. Roy, if you don't introduce your deal about doing some things for, uh.
Um, okay.
Well, you might as well introduce it. Again, it's not gonna be decided today, but I mean, it's probably gonna be on the record, so. Give me a copy of it, I have it.
Well, I had thought I'd print it out somewhere for the other members. So, all right, I kind of alluded to it earlier about meeting the justice spring and springing before the virus. We talked about the jailers, we talked about the dispatchers, we talked about the deputies. And one of the things that we came up with was the concept, what we were, what I was working on, what I was looking at was the idea of a matrix. You recall a couple of years ago, July, uh, we had a conversation about the matrix. And Sheriff and I worked through this conversation, we come up with an idea. And, and we had some more conversation about it, we talked about it, so what I came up with and have written this resolution for consideration. Obviously, this won't be decided today. But to award, not based upon time, but based upon desire of a deputy or merit deputy to seek additional training that will benefit them by giving them more pay and will benefit the county taxpayer and the sheriff's department by having a skill that can be used. So those situations are as follows. Number one, um, a deputy that has attended and gotten successfully graduated from the academy would be awarded $1,000. The matron, due to the statute, is eligible for any of these as well. So the existing deputies, the sheriff is not, the matron is, there would be a maximum of eleven because that's how many deputies there are. So maximum of eleven possible awards paid out in that situation. A deputy that has completed training for and has been certified as an ILVA instructor would be awarded a stipend in the amount of $1,000. That would be limited to four, and as shall be defined as a firearms instructor, physical tactics instructor, EBOC instructor, and/or taser instructor. You can accomplish more than just one of those. If a deputy wants to be certified to teach all four of those, they get all four of them.
So let me ask you a question right there. So it says a maximum of four awards. Is that for, for people, or all could go to one person?
Sure.
So what if I'm a firearms instructor and I'm a physical tactics instructor?
Then you get two of the four awards.
Then I get two of the four awards.
It's up to the sheriff to make sure that he decides who's gonna get the four and how he's gonna.
How you're a parcel amount, okay.
Right, on a parcel amount. Deputy that's completed training for and has been certified as a field training officer would be awarded a stipend of $1,000, and that would be limited to three positions, three awards. Deputy that's completed training for and been certified as a K-9 officer would be $1,000 a year and be awarded no more than three of those. And the last that a member, or a deputy that is a member of an FBI or DEA task force, which would be awarded a stipend of $1,000, and that would be limited to two. The purpose of that very last one is, and it's something the sheriff brought up for me, is these forfeits, some of his forfeiture stuff that, or monies that he used for stuff is because he's had deputies on these task forces and they get a chunk out of that when they go out and raid and so on and so forth, and they gets a chunk of that revenue back in. So if they're gonna participate on these task forces and, and wherever they are, they're bringing revenue into the county. The other purpose of this, and the reason that came around about this way is that we pay for all, and he mentioned it, the jailers and the deputies all have to be certified in, in almost all the stuff. So what do we do? We pay to send them somewhere good. We pay for their travel, we pay for their hotel stays, we pay for the training itself. Well, if we have our own people teaching our own people here, there is a savings. Now, we're going to pay that savings, which I think is the right thing to do if we can, to our own people. To keep it low. So he can work out situations with other agencies, whether they're in this town, or in the county, or outside of the county, and work out, you know, some of those kinds of things. But for those who want to, want to teach these things and learn how to do that, there's, I like a fair way of saying it, an incentive to become a trainer, to teach your fellow, uh, your fellow team.
Same concept Julie showed you about the, the K-1 service, she gets the instructor there, bring in the people in with her.
I mean, she got that grant to teach paramedics for us to pay them more. That they will be better trained, we'll have more paramedics available than we're, and then they will then turn around and teach their, you know, more of them. And this is kind of the theory is that it kind of continues to roll forward.
Get better.
My thought with this is, and it's for your consideration at this point, on, on any further with it, the total cost is $23,000. Every one of these positions gets a reward. That I think it's an incentive to deputies, uh, that want to pursue to be a firearms instructor, to be, how many of these positions do you actually have filled right now? Don't forget the academy, because I think you're all there except for the matron now, right? Or you have one, one.
One's in the academy, and that's it. The matron hasn't, they have some desires never given.
Well, she just had, she's eligible, she's eligible to get them, that's right.
I think two.
And you've had some of these other ones filled, and Pivolar was in his firearms instructor and on a task force, right?
Correct.
We were talking about that one. We've gotta pay to send jailers to learn how to use a taser. Get somebody trained up.
Well, even, even I was talking to probation officers the other day, and, you know, they have to have that same.
Yeah.
Whatever it is, certification or something. I don't know how they get it, whether they get it from you guys or whatever, but, you know, there's another, we may be able to leave farm out and do some others for other departments that have been.
But I think it's made out of courts and what that is, so, or if somebody gets certified using a taser.
Yeah.
We had a guy that was certified, I don't know what it collapsed last year, so.
Well, I'm willing to, well, I, my position in this, and why I pursued down this path in the conversation with you and your ask at this was, is I'm willing to pay, I, I believe in, well, I'm willing to pay for better training and more, being more, making yourself more valuable, and.
And that's just to increase safety for the county.
Absolutely, it benefits everyone. Including the deputies, I like it better than the, the, I look, and I realize we're one of the last few that definitely, we don't just have a police matrix, but, you know. And I don't mean this as a put-down by any means at all, but I went to school for one time, and that getting an praise just because you've lived another year or paid more because you've lived another year, I am not in favor. I just don't, this is not in my makeup. You ought to get, right, based on what you're doing and your experience and that sort of thing, and not just because you've lived another year. And that's what the matrix is all about. This, on the other hand, pays people for doing something that they're really good.
Accomplish.
Accomplish, same, yeah.
So that's before you, uh, it's there, you know, I think you've seen it, you like it, I, you like it. I mean, I think it was based pretty much on the discussions you already had. I mean, I didn't hear it from you, that you did like it.
Well, I think I did, everything that we talked was kind of settled on at that point. I, I realize you haven't seen the actual final document.
Yeah, I showed you the other night, I showed you.
It was, it was, I saw a, a long email chain, and we hit up about it after this. I think it's a good idea.
So, uh, one other question we had, it's been suggested that we need to start paying overtime for the dispatchers. Now, all, pretty much everybody else gets comp time. I assume your jailers get comp time if they work overtime, is that correct?
Correct.
So, so the question to you is, and well, A, is that a good idea, and how do we not do that if we do it for one, do it for all? I, you know, I, I don't know how we suddenly decide that, and it's not just our decision, I didn't help Chris, but the commissioners have a fixation of what will happen, so how we keep them paid. So what do you think of all that?
I, I don't know how you do it for them without them and for everybody else, like you said, which is maintenance, uh, jail staff, deputies, but.
You know, where does it?
You'd have to do it for everybody.
I don't think, I don't think you can just pick out one, one group and do it. Dale Gary told me a long time ago, they don't, you know, you gotta treat everybody the same.
He's right.
But do you think even overtime, I mean, in the end, it's still the same money, whether they, we pay them out, whether we have it or not.
We have probably a handful of people out there that have what I consider an overabundance of comp time.
Which if they need, we'll pay them for that.
Yeah, I think two of those are dispatchers, and it's people that have been there for a long time. Basically, everybody that's got a huge amount of it, has been there for years.
Do you have many of those people, Justin's been there, I don't, probably Cindy's been there a long time, ain't she?
Uh, she was one of them. I don't remember what that, I think there's no, which, we did get a couple of part-time dispatchers, which.
Mark those names.
The COVID things, kind of, they head into that, but if we find some good people that wanna do that, I think that that'll help alleviate the comp time. Like I said, they don't, they don't have thousands of hours or anything, I'd say, if you got eight hundred hours, but it's just harder if you're short-handed to, but they take it down.
Well, there's no doubt that any of these people leave, while we'll owe them for that, for that time, or we're paying them, and that is not. Now, the commissioners are looking at overhauling the comp time, and I don't know what they're gonna do, um, at some point, but I, I don't really know that, you know, the change benefits any, yeah, I don't think that's right, a big part, not others, I don't think.
There'll be like a place.
So you don't really see it as a big problem then, really?
No, and if there's an option to do something, I know money's always one that's here, there for the option to do something else with money, then I guess that, that fits everybody.
That's what I have it to find.
Too short.
Okay, anything else that you wanna say or questions? I don't think I have anything else.
I appreciate you guys coming up with that, taking time, giving it consideration.
So what we're gonna do as far as this, I hope most of you work here for, but we're not probably deciding a salary issue today. We're gonna wait until we get our income tax revenue numbers, and then we will deal with all, do those kind of things until the 18th of September. That's kind of where we're at.